Are we at time, Mr. Tyner?
Eight seconds.
All right. You're our show business consultant.
Five, four, three, two, one, showtime.
Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council will now come to order. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a prayer. Then if you would, please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Bow our heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion, approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes. Voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Proclamation and statements by mayor and council. It is my honor tonight to recognize National Parent Leadership Month. And I know that we have Ms. Madonna Williams here from the Children's Trust Fund of Alabama, District Seven rep. And we have Ms., I think, and if I'm pronouncing this right, Ms. Patricia Lockett and others representing the Children's Trust Fund of Alabama, the Tuscaloosa cohort. And I would ask all those who are here to represent National Parent Leadership Month to come forward. Please come forward, please. We were talking earlier. This is a fun group, by the way. This is a fun group. We're all going to go out afterwards. If you want to, right? We can, uh, we got our soccer player here, though. He's going to be ready to rock and roll. But in all seriousness, recognizing this month, you know, we talk about a lot of serious issues at the city. And one of the things that all of our discussions seem to circle back to is parents and their involvements in the life of children. And I think anything we can do as a community to support that is a worthwhile endeavor. So it's my honor, first of all, thank you for what you do and the calls that you're advocating for. And it's my honor to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas meaningful parent leadership occurs when parents gain the knowledge and skills necessary to function in meaningful leadership roles and present a parent's voice to help shape the direction of their families, programs, and communities. Parent leadership is essential and effective means of strengthening families and preventing child abuse and neglect. And whereas the Alabama Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention, Children's Trust Fund of Alabama recognizes the vital importance of parenting with parents and assists public school systems and private organizations, policymakers, and other key stakeholders to effectively implement parental leadership strategies. And whereas parent leadership is a necessary component in any effective family strengthening and family support system, whereas parent leadership is successfully achieved when parents receive support, training, and shared responsibility, expertise, and leadership in the planning, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of policies, practices, and programs that affect families and their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Walt Maddox, on behalf of our city council, do hereby proclaim February 2023 be National Parent Leadership Month in Tuscaloosa. And we ask all organizations and citizens to join us in supporting parents and their vital leadership roles in their homes and communities. And again, on behalf of the city, thank you for the calls that you are advocating for. And I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you to mayor and the council. This is our second year receiving this honor. And we are just so excited to continue the work that we do to advocate for not only our children, but other childrens and promote advocacy in other families as well, sharing our voice to make a change. So thank you, guys, for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Mr. Tyner, does the council have any announcements?
I just have a comment, if I may. I spent two hours this weekend picking up litter on the road. I had enough litter to fill up my garbage cart to the point I couldn't put my garbage in it. We're talking about parents. Teach your kids not to throw stuff on the road. And this is all over Tuscaloosa. It just bothers me to see all the litter on our roads, and there's no reason for it. That's my comment.
It's mostly the grownups that are doing it.
It's the grownups.
I will say, you know, I've noticed since we no longer have Veterans Parkway under the city, just how trashy it's gotten. And, but I want to thank Delta Chi Fraternity, who just adopted that mile. So I think that they, their signs up. And I think that we've got one fraternity on campus that will now keep Veterans Parkway clean.
Okay, we do have a representative tonight, a Mr. Hill, I believe, from the Small Business Administration. If you would like to address, you mentioned earlier you'd like to address city council. And I think this would be appropriate time for about two minutes, if you would, and talk about what the SBA is doing with the DRCs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council. Leslie Hill with the U.S. Department, Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Assistance. We have been on the ground since the storm, January 12th, assisting survivors, individual homeowners, and renters, and businesses in the areas. I have been assigned to Tuscaloosa, Howe, Marengo, those counties. We just opened up a disaster recovery center in, uh, how's it pronounced?
Utah.
Utah.
It's just opened up today at one o'clock this afternoon. And we have a deadline scheduled for March 12th as a scheduled deadline for any businesses that may, or businesses, homeowners, or renters that may have been affected with the storm. I've been sending information to the mayor with response. So we just want to let the council know that we are here. The SBA is here on the ground along with FEMA. And we'll be here until at least we can get some of the survivors or individuals back on their feet after this storm.
Is there a contact number that somebody's watching this tonight, and they know someone in those impacted disaster areas? They could reach out to the SBA?
Yes. There are three ways to apply. Individuals can apply online at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov. They can visit one of the DRC disaster recovery centers, or they can call the 1-800-659-2955. Those are the opportunities for individuals to apply. They first must register with FEMA, receive their registration number, which will allow them to apply for an SBA loan.
Okay.
These are the low-interest rate loans. The SBA is the largest source of federal funding in the U.S. in time of disaster. So we want to let all the citizens and everyone here in Alabama and Tuscaloosa know that we are on the ground and working for them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, clerk.
This orders demolition of the structures at 1330 26th Street.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, Mr. Junkin.
Mr. Mayor, council. This for the condemnation of 1330 26th Street, condemned June 9, 2022. Property has 33 housing code violations. Owner has been notified at this hearing and is aware that condemned by the city of Tuscaloosa the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. To date, the owner has made significant progress. Uh, our department's recommendation, we give her 90 days to continue on with her progress.
Any questions for Mr. Junkin?
Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The applicant would come forward? The applicant stepped out? You feel very comfortable in this, Mr. Junkin, Mr. Williams? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion that we extend to 90 days and then have her to come back.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Before we vote, Mr. Junkin, Mr. Williams, thank you for the outstanding job you guys do on this. Day in, day out, you guys do a fantastic job. Voting Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The resolutions table for 90 days. Thank you. Go ahead.
I think, Mr. Mayor, does she want to do stand? Does she want to address us? Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right.
All right, that's all.
Clerk?
This approves a restaurant retail liquor license at Grandstand in Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, Mr. Mills.
Okay, good evening, councilor and mayor. This is ABC Alcohol Application 23-004 for a restaurant retail liquor located at 2209 Fourth Street, Unit 10. This is a map, overview map of the location. Next picture shows the street map of the proposed location. All necessary reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion will come give his report followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Chief?
I know you ought to rather have Officer Champion. No incidents at this location over a one-year period. If you look at the heat map, it is at Timberson Square. So you have a lot of alcohol-related problems in this location. The PD does not have an objection to the restaurant license. We do have an objection to the upcoming gastropub. And I can talk about that now or come up when that comes up. It'd be your choice.
Any questions for chief or Mr. Mills?
This is what we're going to vote on is the restaurant license.
Alcohol.
Yes, we do not oppose a restaurant at all. It's a gastropub that we will oppose.
Thank you, chief. If the applicant would come forward and please give your name and address. We're not there.
Good evening. Rajivinder Singh, address 491 Camille Lane, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35405.
Any questions for the applicant?
I'm not familiar with background. You already in the restaurant business?
Yes, sir.
You have other locations?
Uh, yes, we have one, I have another one on University Bistro 17, next door to Children's Hands on Museum.
Okay.
And just did a transfer, but used to run La Bamba Mexican Grill.
You serve alcohol at those locations?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Restaurant retail liquor license is approved. Consent agenda, clerk.
This approves items A through E on the consent agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
Been moved and second, voting Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Consent agenda is adopted. Public hearings, clerk.
This approves a gastropub as a conditional use for Grandstand in Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, Ms. Hayes.
Good evening, council. I hope y'all are all doing well tonight. So we do have that conditional use application. Like, we got some loud music going on outside. But Raji Singh is petitioning for that conditional use approval to operate a gastropub.
Let's pause. I think we could write a noise ordinance violation right there.
I bet I know where that's coming from.
Or Ms. Hayes has her own walk-in music, one or the other.
I do, surprise. And back to business. So we are operating that gastropub at 2209 Fourth Street, Zone BC DROD, Council District One. Area view of that property, y'all are familiar with this. So again, that conditional use request is subject to review and approval by city council, considering occupancy, kitchen hours of operation, and bar hours of operation in proximity to like establishments, public safety plan, and plan to reduce possible nuisances. So per Tuscaloosa Fire, the occupancy is set at 375. After talking with the applicant, they are going to be installing four pool tables. And so I talked with the fire marshal that may potentially affect that number that is right here that was given originally to Honky Tonk before they came in. But Tuscaloosa Fire Rescue can touch on that if that is something that y'all are concerned about. So for the hours of operation, it's a little bit confusing. But the applicant has said at this point in time in the year, they cannot successfully open on Sundays and Mondays in the way that they would like to be. So Sunday and Monday hours of operation are going to start in the fall when things start picking up a little bit more. So on Sundays in the fall, the kitchen hours of operation are going to be 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., bar 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. For Mondays, it's going to be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the kitchen and 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. for the bar. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, kitchen is going to be 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And bar 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And then Friday, kitchen will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then bar 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For their public safety plan, per the petitioner, they will have the following. They're going to have staff in place throughout the location to handle safety procedures during hours of operation, security cameras and lighting in place. Employees will be trained on how to handle emergency situations. Patrons will be using public parking and/or public transportation to reach this location. Train security will also be present during busy times to control occupancy and check IDs. And last call will be announced prior to closing. Do y'all have any questions?
And that, that number was 375?
375. And I will also say there was a little bit of a typo. The kitchen hours of operation, I'll go back to it, for Tuesday through Saturday, it's going to be 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., not 12:00 a.m. Sorry about that. But that occupancy as of now is 375.
Any questions for Ms. Hayes?
Emily, one question I wanted to ask earlier today. If this, for one reason or another, gets voted down, what is, what are his options? Does he have to come back for another license? Or does this automatically, because he's gotten the alcohol license, he can only operate as a restaurant?
He can only operate as a restaurant. So the approval that he was given tonight for the alcohol license allows him to operate as a restaurant. Per zoning, we're going to limit him to those typical hours of operation for a kitchen, for a restaurant.
Which is?
They'll be required to close by 10.
So what about during the weekend hours? What would be his time frame?
11?
Essentially, they would just, they would be restricted in the way that they operate, to only operate as a restaurant and serve full meals throughout that whole time that they're open. So they wouldn't be able to close down and then open up as a bar and restrict patrons from coming in or anything of that sort. So it would just be operating as a restaurant if this were to get denied.
Zach, also, the gastropub is not a license, is it? It is a ordinance, correct?
It is a conditional use that you guys would be approving.
Okay.
Any other questions of our team? Yes, chief?
As I stated multiple times in pre-council, the police partner does object to this. We believe gastropubs turn into a straight bar. The occupancy there is going to add a heavy load to Timberson Square. And I believe it's, could create an unsafe environment. It is no, nothing about the applicant. It's just a consideration of that area can be overburdened with people, and we need to keep a safe environment. And the 375 turning, or 345 turning into a bar does create a public safety risk with what we've had and seen with mega bars.
Any questions for chief? Thank you, chief. If the applicant would come forward and please give your name and address.
Rajivinder Singh, 491 Camille Lane, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35405.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Singh?
Yes, sir.
If this application is denied, do you have a plan B just to be a restaurant, or have you gotten that far? I'm curious.
I mean, I would be a restaurant as of now, then. Yes, sir.
Um, Singh, can you talk about what it is that you wanted to have at this particular location?
So we want to kind of go back to being a sports bar as Will Higgins was for 17 years. We did add the pool tables already. So like Emily said, I'm requesting a lower occupancy due to that because you can't move those pool tables anymore. We are working on a golf simulation also to have that an indoor simulator and some other games. But the reason, more or less, to go to a gastropub, I guess to deter underage later on at night for the patrons to enjoy.
We heard a lot about underage persons coming into your establishment. As we, can you speak to, speak to that about the, how would you manage, manage that?
So I'm working with Shelley Hoover, owns PSG, and using their security at our location during those times as a gastropub.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
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 The application fails. Clerk?
This approves an application for a permit to construct a pier for commercial use for North River Holdings LLC.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and second, Mr. LaFoy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this is the application for North River Holdings, the North River Yacht Club, where they're adding docks. This is what it looks like now. And this is what it wants to look like in the future. They're going to be tearing out all the old docks except for one that was placed in 2018. Replace them in new aluminum floating structures. He's going to have lights. They're going to have 165 boat slips, 24 jet ski slips, two trams. He's going to put new seawalls. They're going to replace the gas tanks and the pumps. And this is the measurements we got now. And the one pier going in the back of the slough, the X in it has been removed. So any questions?
Any questions, Mr. LaFoy?
I'll ask the same question you've already answered. Mr. LaFoy, Lake Tuscaloosa is a big part of your life. Are you okay with this?
I am. We, we took the plans down, 18, we took 18 slips out. And we did what we could to work his, his plan, what he could survive, his plan. And safety, we looked at that and got all the openings big enough for best practices. And everything seems safer. I wouldn't have it here tonight for everything to be snow wake, idle speed only in there. So I feel like it's a safe. It's just, I mean, y'all won't, y'all approve it or not?
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. LaFoy. If the applicant would come forward, please give your name and address.
Good evening, council, mayor. Andy Turner, 1810 Commons North Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406. James has been great to work with. We've been working on this quite some time to get to a plan that everybody feels good about. And so I think we've finally arrived at that. And, you know, one of the things that you don't see in just drawings up there is the operational side of a business. And that's what's really important to us and everything that we do with our company. And I think a key differentiator that will happen with the operation of this marina. Most marinas, including this one, have just been operated as you pay your monthly fee and your boat's there and you go use it whenever you want to. Part of the things that we're doing with this is really elevating the level of service by having a staff on site. We're installing cameras throughout the property. You know, one of the things that James referenced was honoring the waits, no-wake zones. So being able to have a staff and cameras to help with enforcement on that is a key part of what we will be doing that kind of elevates the experience for everyone who's using the marina, but also helping to protect our shoreline, protecting the boats and the docks and everything that's there in our area as well. And just being good stewards of the lake by having it staffed. And we're also going to be implementing better education with our boat slip renters as well as part of it. And so we look to really help improve the lake experience through those types of things at the marina.
Any questions for Mr. Turner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against?
Said he can't hear. He can't hear, kid.
Mr. Page, do you want to? Yeah. If you would, just give your name and address.
Sir. Mayor, I'm Stan Page. And I haven't had the pleasure of really standing in front of this council before. Nice to see all of you. I'm going to join in property owner with about 10 acres. I don't know that I oppose the development, but I've never had a visitor from the developer. There's a gate that's closed at night. It goes down to the existing facility. Sort of like know more about the operations, concern about the tree cutting, and what it does to the visibility from the property I have, given that it's going to be a pretty significant operation there. Pull the plan back up if you could, if somebody would. And again, I don't know that I'm opposed, but I do want to know a little bit about the operations because there is a gate at the top of the hill. And when you see that red X there, I'm not sure that I know what that means. That is, that's my view quarter to the lake. And as long as it stays like it is, I'm happy. If it doesn't stay like it is, I want to hear more from the developer is exactly what we're going to see there and how it's going to operate. How is it going to operate? It's my understanding there will be some kind of minions down there. So I'd like to know more about how it's going to operate and what's going to happen in that view quarter.
Mr. Page, can we see?
And I think it's reasonable that, that I hear that, given the significant amount of land that I own that I joined.
Mr. Page, can you tell us where your property is? I'm looking at this.
We see where the red X is, Councilman Howard, not Councilman, Councilwoman Howard, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You see where the big red X is?
Uh huh.
I own about 10 acres, looking straight toward the lake, up that slough, or inlet. And again, we'll make sure that I'm clear. I'm not opposed to the development. There's a need for more slips all over the lake. So again, I talked with Turner a few days ago. And he represented to me that there's going to be no change up that slough. I want to know that. And I want to know how the gate's going to be handled. Mr. Turner?
He actually is going to get more room going in his slough. We're going to back, where it says eight boats, we're going to pull that in. And what's there now is actually doesn't stick out as far as a...
He's having a hard time hearing.
If you, Mr. LaFoy, can you speak directly into the microphone?
You're actually going to have better access into your slough. There's a wooden pier sticking out there now that sticks out over halfway of your slough. We're not going to let that pier there come out over a third. So you're actually going to have more access coming into your slough. It's just for boats. But you know how you got that wooden pier sticks out like halfway? I have to let him answer that.
Let's...
Got you. So the, the pier that's shown right there, that's the only one that is not covered. Those are, so it's just a flat, you know how the wood dock is there currently? It's just flat. It sticks way out. And that's kind of where guest parking is for the marina. That's what this is going to continue as is for... So if you're coming by lake to the captain's cabin in your boat, that's what those slips...
that's what those slips are for right there on that side. And it will actually take up less of the slough than the current dock does. Uh, so the condominiums, um, they're not shown in this. Uh, that, it is, I just don't have that here, because it wasn't part of the marina presentation. We did the condo stuff a couple of months ago. Um, and so this is just for the marina tonight. So I don't have any of that, but I'm glad to show you, um, show you all those plans. I have those. No, the, just the approval process was multiple steps. So the, um, permit to do the marina was separate from the approval to do the condos. Because they're, um, ha- this is handled through the lakes division, and the other was handled through planning and zoning. Yeah. So we're gonna improve the gate, um, and it will be, uh, stone and wrought iron, and it will be, um, actually controlled, Bluetooth controlled. So, um, if you're a condo owner or, uh, a slip holder, you'll have, um, access on your phone that gets you through the gate. Uh, so that will actually be improved and have security cameras as well.
Let's, let's, let's do this, um, and I'm learning quite a bit, and I appreciate that, but it's actually out of order in our rules of procedure. Mr. Page, do you have any more questions that Mr. Turner might can answer? Any, does he have any more questions that he can answer for you?
Yeah, well, I want to know what it's all gonna look like together, not just piecemeal. And, uh, again, I don't know that I'm against the development. I'm not up here speaking against it. I just want to know how it's gonna impact me, and it's gonna impact the traffic coming through the neighborhood. And is there gonna be a gate? Is there not gonna be a gate? You know, how that gate's going to operate? I mean, again, I think these are reasonable questions, but somebody that's not in opposition to development would like to see it all.
Yes, sir.
And know how it's gonna operate.
I, I think.
There's another one about tree cutting. I'm gonna ask where the trees are going to be cut, and I mean, it's just a list of things. I think at the end of the day, we need to see what some of the parts look like, as a whole.
Well, I will make certain too that Mr. LaFoy, that I know you've, I, I think you may have spoken with, is, keeps you updated in this process as well. I will make certain that, uh, Mr. LaFoy, our lakes director, keeps you updating this process, and I think.
Well, I mean, we've never had, uh, anybody associated with, uh, we've never had anybody associated, associated with a project come and say, hey, I'd like to show you what we're doing here. I might not be here tonight at that, if I have to. But I've gotten, the more I read about this, the more I'm seeing. I've got concern about how it impacts my property and a commercial operation this size, how it impacts the traffic by my property and to the lake.
Certainly understand.
I'm not against the development. I just like to see what, um, before there's any action here, I'd like to see what it's all looking like. Not part of it, but all of it.
And, and I'll, and I'll ask Mr. LaFoy and Mr. Turner to meet with you immediately afterwards, or at a time that's convenient for you. Um, does the council have any more questions? That, that'll be their call.
Can we table it for, um, make a motion to table it for one week, so they can have a chance to get together?
Okay. It's been a motion and second to table for one week. It's still a public hearing. Anyone else? I've, I've officially lost control of this public hearing. Is there? Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this pub, the, the, on this public hearing? Seeing none, we have a motion and second to table. Is that still the desire of the city council? Okay.
It is for me.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right. Y'all ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Just ask to table it for one week, so they can meet.
Okay. I, I just want to know what I was voting on. Okay. Voting to table for one week, voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
You're what? You're okay?
Okay, well then I. So then I want to, I want to rescind.
No.
I want to go home.
Can I rescind it, or do we need to vote it down?
Just vote no on the table, and then we'll, we'll vote it. Just vote, just, let's vote. Uh, I think we have one yes, and Mr. Busby, start the no votes.
No.
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 The motion to table for one week fails. We have the original question called back up. Voting, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Your local democracy at work. Good luck. Thank you, Mr. Page. Uh, resolution ordinances of a, a not of a general nature are permanent operation, clerk.
This authorizes amendment number one to the agreement with John B. Galloway.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This will authorize an agreement with United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes a professional services contract with Garner and Associates Engineering.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This will authorize execution of an agreement for engineering and related services for a bathymetric study of Lake Tuscaloosa.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes a contract with B&amp;J Painting Services LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Accurate Air Balance LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Airtech of Tuscaloosa.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Pacco Electrical.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This will authorize a disbursement from District Three Improvements Funds for the Northridge High School Band.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes a disbursement from District Three Improvements Funds for the neighborhood bridges.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Northport Electrical Supply.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes payment of blood insurance premium for the Tuscaloosa Amphitheater.
Move it up.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted. Clerk.
This tentatively awards a public works contract for the twenty-twenty-three sanitary sewer rehab and repair project.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 Resolution is adopted. Ordinances and resolutions of a general nature are permanent operation. For introduction, clerk.
This introduces zoning amendment number fifteen-oh-five.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
I am recusing from this vote.
Yes.
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 For adoption, clerk.
This sets March fourteenth as a date for a public hearing to consider a zoning amendment number fifteen-oh-five.
Move it up.
Second.
Moved in second. Voting, Mr. Phel?
Yes.
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 I am also recusing from this vote.
Yes.
Date is set. Um, auditing account.
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Thank you of bills.
And the bills?
Pitiful. Four-ninety-four.
Moved, uh, I'm gonna take that as a sec.
As a half a dozen eggs.
Voting, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
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 Citizens comments and other communications. Any citizens wish to address their city council tonight? Seeing none, subject to excise of mayor obito and ordinances of a general nature are permanent operation. All applicable departments hereby order to otherwise implement council policy to stay inactive. Your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. Voting, Mr. Wilson?